All right, welcome everybody to Otero County's special meeting agenda. Can I have a roll call please?
Commissioner Mathely?
Here.
Commissioner Griffin?
Here. Sorry.
Our court.
I didn't know if I had one mic on.
At this time, can I get an approval or make a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item one on the agenda would be the quest request approval of ordinance two-one dash oh-two, amending ordinance eight-five dash oh-one to reassign precincts according to the three commission districts. This is submitted by RB Nichols, our attorney. Do you want to talk a little bit on that?
I can't. Morning Commissioners. Technically, we're supposed to do this every ten years. It looks like it hasn't been done for quite some time, but we went ahead and went through the process this year after the 2020 census contracted with an outside firm to provide us with three plans and what they do when they do that, they look at what the census said, where the population situated, and there's certain guidelines that govern how we can split up the districts and the main goal is to have the most equal representation in each district. So I think in addition to your book, you got a spreadsheet this morning. On there, the first page is going to show you what we are now, where we currently are. And if you look, the third block over says deviation and down at the bottom, it shows an ideal number of twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirteen individuals per district. So that's the total population divided by three in a perfect world, discounting wherever one lives and things like that. If everything was equal, we you'd each have twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirteen people in your district. You look above there, currently we're off on that by quite a bit in each of these, twenty-three percent in one and seventeen percent in another district. We want to be ten percent or less is the goal. So there's three plans before you. I know you've had a chance to review the maps. You haven't necessarily had a chance to review these spreadsheets because we just got those to you this morning. But in my review, Plan A keeps things mostly where they're at. It has the most deviation as far as population, but it's still it's below five percent for each one. The key thing about it, I think, is it keeps things mostly the same and land-wise, what you're covering square mileage is more equal. Because you look at some of these other plans like Plan B and that one, it doesn't get us any closer, but land-wise, District Three is covering a significant amount of more coverage. Same with Plan C. Plan C gets you the most closest to that ideal number, under one percent deviation in each one, but there's some disparity in the land coverage that each commissioner would have to cover. But I know we have the gentleman who prepared the maps, I think, is available to answer questions about the process. Any of these three plans are acceptable. They're within the guidelines and really it comes down to a preference. Some language another county used that I thought was good was for their decision, they described as the least disruptive and most equitable manner of adjustment.
I, probably typical coy fashion, I come along with just and have a problem, but you know, I commend you on all your efforts, really on putting all the numbers together and the different breakouts and stuff, but the data that you're using in order to compile this, in my opinion, if we're basing this off of our census, I don't believe that we can do our duties because we're basing it off of those that could be in our country illegally because in our actual census, the question of a legal citizen wasn't even addressed. So, you know, we could have a third of the population or maybe a quarter of the population that we're accounting and we're treating as legal citizens whenever they're not legal citizens and they shouldn't be getting the benefits that other legal citizens are getting, you know? I mean, I have an issue. That's where my issue rests and it's not going to be solved in one meeting like we're doing now. So, you know, I know that a lot of this stuff is mandated by the state and we have to do it and there's laws, but my oath is more important to me than anything and I'm going to protect the legal citizens in my county and I'm going to have to maybe just opt out of any discussion moving forward. And if my other two commissioners want to continue moving forward with the redistricting, I don't believe it's fair. I think it's extremely political. The way they're doing the redistricting, because the redistricting isn't just based on populace, but it also takes in other factors as well, like ethnic background and gender and sexual preference. I mean, I think that maybe if we really need to redistrict inside of Otero County, I don't know if we could come up with another way that we could do it, but again, I just feel like anything we do based off of the census is going to be based off of bad numbers that are not right because, you know, these aren't just legal voters, these aren't just legals that applied in the census, but there were illegals that participated in it. So that would make it to me an illegal census. So that'd be my position.
Is Rod on there? Morning Rod, this is Gerald Mathely. How you doing? Maybe Rod's not on there.
There's not any.
Is he muted?
Do you need to turn the?
No, they've got their cameras off.
Yeah, they need to turn on on their side. Oh, there we can hear you now, we can't see you. You might need to turn your camera on too. Okay, that's fine. We can hear you though. We can hear you, not real good. You might have to speak loud and clear. No, it's the same. I don't know if we can turn him up on our end.
Where are you totally up?
Can you put that microphone down by the speaker and use our?
That's what I'm trying to do. It's like this isn't coming through. Go ahead and have him say something.
Give us a test on your end, Rod. About the same.
Sounds like someone's asking.
We're just working on things on our end. Just count to ten.
Pamela, do you need to give permission for them to share a screen?
Oh no, they shut down the cameras.
Okay.
He said he doesn't have camera.
Okay. The female was asking if she could share.
Can he call on the phone? Talk on the phone, what is on there too?
I don't know. I don't know. You could call this number, I guess.
Yeah, you know what? You might be able to just call in just as easy, Rod, and we might be able to hear you better over our landline and through this computer.
What is this number, Sylvia? Do you know? Tell me, do you know this number?
What, hey Pamela, what number you wanting to call?
I'm trying to figure that out.
Okay, just a second.
I'm trying to figure out what number this is. Commission Chambers, two-six-ten. Rod, I have a number for you to call. You have a PIN? Five-seven-five? Four-three-nine? Two-six-one-zero.
Hey ma'am, when this is over, I need to talk to you just for a second.
You don't have that power when we do anything. Yes.
Yep.
Rod, you want me to call you?
Uh, that appears to be W. Gonna have to do that, I don't mind. It's just that I'm just looking at the screen and it says, "Molly", so I'm thinking about it.
What number?
Uh, six-two-six.
Okay, I'll call you right now.
Hello, Rod.
Hi Rod, we've got you.
Okay, great. Uh, he's a statute that applies to city government, municipal and county governments, one that pre- that thirteen, and then subparagraf, hence, it says the local public body shall establish a district.
Hey Rod, can you hear us?
Yeah.
You need to start all over again with where you just began because we couldn't hear anything with second ago. Just wait just a second until we're, are we ready on our end mic?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think we got you on now.
Okay. The applicable part of the statute on redistricting is one dash three dash thirteen, and it says that a local public body shall establish district as which the number of persons in each district as shown in the most recent federal decennial census is nearly equal in population practical, but within five percent of the mean. So we don't really have any choice with regard to the Census Bureau. That's the official population, even if, go ahead.
I think we always have a choice, Rod, you know? I mean, whenever you take into consideration this census, Rod, they're counting every person that's living inside of the county and a lot of people that are living inside of our counties are not legal citizens and that was not a question that was asked on our census. So right now, as our borders are wide open with all of these illegals that are coming into our country by the tens of thousands, now they're going to be counted in these censuses and this kind of documentation right here without even ever even finding out if they're legal citizens. So I don't see how you could redistrict a county based on a census that's not legal from the beginning. I mean, I just don't see it.
The Census Bureau has counted, always counted, everyone who was at their domicile on the first of April of the year of the census. So this would be like more than eighteen months ago, first of April twenty-twenty, who all is living in the United States, three-hundred-and-thirty-one million.
I know, but Rod, the question was never asked if those were legal citizens though, was it?
Uh, no, that was a question that was proposed and rejected. However, the Census Bureau has always counted all people living in the United States, including non-citizens. It's always done that, so that's not a change.
Well, they've always done it wrong, in my opinion, because they should always just count the legal citizens, but what happens, Rod? And you know this as well as I do, that this redistricting is one of the most important things that's going to affect our politics in America today. It's going to change the fabric and the scope of each district. So it's extremely important that we handle this right and to base our districts off of a populace that might not be a legal populace, I think is extremely foolish and I think it's exactly what our US senators and US reps on the progressive left side exactly want us to accept on the county level. They pass these bills on, they do this to us on the federal side, Rod, and we never take a stand on the local side and say, no, this isn't right. But that's what we have to start doing and there's no better time to do it than right now because our electorate has never been as critical as it is today and I think you would agree with me on that.
Well, there's nothing that is in my power to change those kinds of major policy discussions that you're involved in.
I know, but I know, but as a body of county commissioners, we have the power to do that. You don't have the power to do it. All you've done is compiled this study and it's your business, you know? You're running your business. But we, as a body of commissioners, we do have the power because we hold that through our oath of office and we have the power to get things back on the local level if we have the backbone to do it, you know? And that's what, that's where we rest today. I mean, I know that these numbers that the census gave us are not legal numbers. I know that they're not right. So why would I want to vote on something that I know was not handled right from the beginning? I mean, I know that Brian Egoth wants us to do this. I know that Michelle Grisham wants us to do this. I know that Joe Biden wants us to do this, but I don't think we, the people, I don't think it's good for we, the people. I don't think it's good for the people and that's why I'm going to buck the bridle off on it and I'm going to fight it.
Okay. Getting back to the Otero County situation and your population of over nearly sixty-nine, sixty-eight thousand, you're required every ten years to make your districts as close to equal in terms of one person, one vote principles as you can. And coming into this redistricting period, District One was about five thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-eight over the ideal or about twenty-three percent above. District Two was thirteen-hundred-and-three below the ideal, about five, five-point-seven-six percent below. And District Three was three thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-five over the ideal. So it was seventeen-point-six-seven percent below, excuse me. So you've got Districts One and Three that are twenty-three percent and seventeen percent out of balance respectively, and District Two, which is just a little bit under six percent out of the allowable deviation. So those, Districts, District One had to give up a lot of populations, both Districts Two and Three, in terms of net move of precincts, and that's what you see in Plans A, B, and C. The plans give you different looks to how you as a commission can look at this and decide what kind of concept you want to move with. Plan A, I think, is discussed earlier by someone, I heard, I didn't know who it was, but it's correct. It probably has the least geographical movement. District Two retains the northern third roughly of the county and Districts One and Three have changes. Most of the changes that occur are done in the interior of Alamo Gordo where all the population is. For instance, in Plan A, Plan A moves precincts nineteen, twenty, fifty, twenty-two, and thirty-two from District One to District Three. And that's to even out the population. Go ahead, sorry. Yes, can you let, Bob, can you let us share the screen? Okay, as you can see in the interior of Alamo Gordo and Plan A, where precincts nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, thirty-two, and fifty are among those that are moved from District One into District Three. And of course, this kind of movement has to happen because District Three is down nearly four thousand from the ideal and District One is over five thousand over the ideal. There's some minor changes also in District Two to bring it, to bring it within the five percent allowable deviation. So you probably have your data displays in front of you.
So Rod, Plan A is going to be the most current to what it is right now, if I'm understanding this. Is that right?
I would say that in terms of the geographical shape and look of everything, yes. It keeps everything probably closer to the visual image of the districts.
So on your graph, on your map, on the colors, the light blue, is that what you took from District One and Two and made into Three on Plan A?
On Plan A, the light blue simply shows what District Three would look like under Plan A.
Right.
And the sort of lavender look is what District One would look like under Plan A and yellow is what District Two would look like.
Right, okay.
And Rod, if you had a, if you had a heavy population of illegals that were living in one neighborhood together, all next to each other, that'd probably affect the district as well, right?
The Census Bureau counts everybody who responds to the census on the first of April of the census year.
Yeah.
And so they've always counted non-citizens.
I know.
So if you've got non-citizens living in any of the, any of Otero County and they're participating in the census, that they did get counted, yes.
And you know, and it's not, I don't think Otero County has as big of a problem as so many counties too, but you know, it's got to start somewhere and if we're looking at these different maps that have been kind of drawn up on numbers that, I mean, we don't know these, I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I can't believe that locally elected officials consider, even considering this census that we know is an illegal census, we know there are tens of thousands, if not millions, of illegals that participated in the census and they're going to be treated in the same fashion with the same regard as legal American citizens and I think that's what people in our country today are sick of, is politicians that are selling us out, you know? I mean, this is, any redistricting base, if there's any influence as far as gender or sex, or said the both, gender or nationality or sexuality, those should not be considered in any kind of redistricting because it's discrimination and I believe they are today, you know? But if we could come up with a way to just split our populace in Otero County without taking anybody's ethnic background into consideration, just their legal status, I think that would be the simplest, most effective way to go. But for all these different plans and stuff, for me, it seems like it should be cut and dry. There's sixty, roughly sixty-six thousand people in the county, there's three commissioners, take that land size and just whack it up without taking anything else into consideration and, or population and draw your districts off of that. I don't know. I mean, I think, feel like that would be the simplest, safest way, but I guess that's not the way it's always been.
No, we have to use population and although I do provide you with the square miles, I believe you should be able to see the square miles in each district on your data view or in front of you. If that's not the case, let me know.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Otero County.
Really the land area size doesn't really, I mean, I don't think, I don't know, I guess with you and Chaparral, I guess you have to do a lot of driving, but that's just going to be, you know, living in Alamo and representing District Three, you know, and that's just what you're going to.
Not as much driving, if you put, if you go Plan B, which is District Three, is forty-eight, almost forty-eight hundred square mile.
First to buy an airplane.
Yeah. Well, you know, but if we were traveling, if we had to, if we, if this was like full-time travel, door-to-door all the time, then it would, but I mean, I don't know. I don't see the land size as critical as the population and the demographics of the population and keeping that pure and it not being manipulated by the political minds to, you know, to cut.
Plan A is making the population as equal as possible. That's as close as you're going to get in the population.
All the plans use only population to try to give you different concepts of how the county might most appropriately appear since you're the body charged with the legal requirement of maintaining one person, one vote. It is true that in District, in the view of, from District Plan B, the northern part of the district is now represented by, would be represented by, in District Three in part and in District Two in part, and District Three would now have forty-seven hundred square miles and the other two would have seven-hundred-and-eighty and eleven-hundred, but the populations would be equal in terms of one person, one vote standards. And then we can pop up maybe Plan C, which gives you yet another choice in terms of how you want to conceptualize the county. In Plan C, we do have, I believe, the very closest deviation. Try to get it down as close to zero percent deviation, so theoretically, every individual in the county has the same power with regard to representation on the county commission. I believe those deviations are, they're below fifty people from the ideal, so you have have minuscule deviations, that's, that's really the best one in terms of one person, one vote, but that is not necessarily meet, you know, it's up to the people who know the, the county the best, you're, you, the elected officials charged with this, in terms of which of these three, uh, views best represents the way in which the county should be perceived, uh, in, in terms of the constituencies that you have. Now, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I did draw a couple of more plans just, just for fun for you, because you are the second largest county in the state. I'd like to pop up Plan A, uh, as it might look if you had five commissioners, just for you to look at it.
We appreciate that, Rod.
And that's the way the county would look if it had five commissioners, uh, more or less based on Plan A, which is, which is more or less based on the current array, that leaves, for example, District Two, uh, having the full northern third of the county almost still, even with five commissioners.
Sure, and I, and I don't, I don't mean to be rude, Rod, but I don't think we're, we're considering five commissioners now, so let's just stick on what the maps look like with three.
Okay, I just wanted to let you guys see that.
Okay, thank you.
So we're back to Plan A now?
Yes. Rod, what you got? Plan A for what? We've got two different screens here, it looks to me like there's two different Plan As on the-
I think it's just different parts of the map. That was this one. It's, it's all Plan A, it's just different pictures of the maps.
Oh, okay.
Is that corrected now, you know, or you're just looking at Plan A?
Yes.
We can show interior shots of, uh, the city of Alamogordo, and we can show different places where District Two meets up with District Three, District One meets up with District Three, District Two meets up with District One, and so on.
You got any questions on that?
No, I, I still think that Plan A is probably the least confusing for the voters because it's pretty much along the same lines that we have right now. I don't disagree with Coy about the redistricting, like the congressional senate, I think they're ripping our lips off on that one. This one is pretty much what we've got right now, I mean, there's a few changes, but not too many.
The only bad thing is, is this, the census, that they're taking into consideration all the illegals too, you know, and so, how can you, how can you take into consideration a, a district if you're not sure, without doubt, that the people that are living in are legal American citizens, because you know how many illegals we have living in America right now, and all this is gonna do is just continue this, this destruction that these liberals have already started to completely destroy our country, and this is part of the fight that they're doing right now, as our borders are left wide open, and illegals pour into our country, and then the Ilhan Omars and the Castillo Cortezes, they're not gonna let us ask anybody's, um, legal status, but if we were to put our foot down on this and just say, no, we're not gonna, I, my conscience will not allow me to support a plan that is built on numbers that I don't feel like I, I, I know that they're, they were collected correctly, because I don't think our census was gonna happen, you know, I mean, but that's how the, that's how the Fed keeps us hijacked at the local level, they just say, yes, do as I say, and then they put in all their mandates, and then all of a sudden, we're sitting here going, oh, but we gotta follow state law, but really, we don't, we really just need to serve the people that elected us into office and do so, to the best of our ability.
From what I understand, this is just a count, right, of people, so it's not allowing them a, a right to vote or-
Well, it's, it's, it's allowing them, it's allowing them a, a right in the process because they're now being counted, just like a legal American is being counted, and so then our tax dollars are gonna be directed towards those populaces, and if you have a bunch of illegals living in one area, th- through the census, they're gonna be treated the exact same way as legal taxpaying Americans, and, and I think that we could, we could at least try to push back a little bit on the county level, I don't know where it would get us, I don't know what kind of illegal mess it would get us into, but I just think that we have to begin somewhere.
We didn't approve this, though, what would really change, because it's pretty much where we're at right now, there's not a whole lot of changes, I mean, there's a few-
It was, to me, really, to me, that's your question, it's more to me, it's more about just compliance with them. You know, I mean, if it really doesn't change anything, then why do we have to do it to begin with? You know, but it's the way the government always is controlling us through all this stuff, and, I mean, I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna follow the law, I don't wanna be a lawbreaker, but I wanna follow the Constitution, I don't wanna follow the ideas of a bunch of liberal Democrats in Santa Fe that's telling us what to do. If we wanna follow the law, let's get right down to the bare bones of the Constitution, and let's follow that document, and anything that's not constitutional, let's throw it out, and let's, and I guarantee you, if all we did was just begin the fight, we would have so much community support, we would have so much support, and I think that, I mean, people are looking for hope, and I think that we can give them hope on a local level by not going along with stuff that we don't have a clear conscience over, and the census, if they don't ask in the census if you're legal or if you're illegal, to me, you have an illegal census, it's as simple as that. I mean, how can you count people in our country with the same status and stature who are here illegally as you do with legal Americans, it's not right, it's not our country, we're a nation of laws. But, that's why I say, it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it, I don't support it, I don't support it moving forward, and, and, uh, what we have to do from there, we'll just figure it out, but.
If we don't pick any of these, they're probably, 'cause this has to be done by December thirtieth, 'cause they're gonna assign one of the majority of them they want, then-
Ah, they're not, they won't, I don't see how they could step in there and just go to assign and stuff, I think it would probably just stay the same, and then maybe they might try to leverage us legally, and then we can just find out what kinda constitutional grounds they have. I mean, that's the way I see it, that's, that's the way to measure up here, you know, whoever's trying to make a decision that I think is illegal, because again, the census, it's, it's not, it's, it's like building a castle on that foundation, we move forward with this, we know the foundation isn't, isn't pure, so we're building on, on, on a faulty foundation through a skewed audit, and then we're gonna build a mess, and somebody else is gonna have to try to clean our blade. We can make sure that we don't even start something like this right now, 'cause the redistricting, I'm telling you, that's the one way they're really gonna, they're gonna start getting us, politically speaking.
Plan A is the closest to the idea of the thing that we got.
Yeah, okay.
That, that's the least amount of change, the only change there is in Plan A.
Sure.
On Test Street.
And, and, and I, 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 I would say, yeah, whatever, if it's kind of the same plan and the same demographics, whatever, but the fact of it is, at the bottom of the day, we're making a decision based on a census that is, has numbers gathered on it, that are not, it's, it wasn't legally done, in my opinion, and so, it's not, I don't support this because it doesn't fit my liking as far as land size and population, that's not why I'm not supporting it, I'm not supporting it because the redistricting is, is built off of a census that was not conducted legally, I believe, should've counted legal Americans, not anybody that wants to cross into our country.
Unbelievable.
Um, with regard to the constitutional provision, we don't really get to local redistricting in the US Constitution, the US Constitution is for the purpose of, of, uh, enumeration in order to achieve the right balance among congressional representatives in the US House of Representatives. However, the same language that's in there has been, has been looked at in case law through the years with regard to local redistricting, which only became a thing about fifty to sixty years ago, and it's important to note that the, the Constitution with regard to determining enu- uh, the number of representatives that each state has, and whether or not somebody gets one more or loses one or so, and simply requires actual enumeration, uh, it's, you know, using the language from the orig- from the Constitution, the whole number of free persons, uh, and so it's not really, if, if the Constitution said to count only citizens, which would have been, been a difficult thing in a way in seventeen ninety when the first census was taken, and seventeen eighty-seven when this was written, um, then, then the Census Bureau would have to follow that and count only citizens, but that's not what the Constitution says, it calls for an actual enumeration of those persons living in the, in the, in the state.
Well, I don't know, I, I feel like whenever it comes to the tax dollars and these issues like this right here, it, it, only legal citizens need to be considered, not illegals, but maybe that's just thought against the Constitution, I don't know, but it seems legal.
And you may, you may well be right on, on that, policy-wise, I can understand why people would, would view things that way, I would, but that's really not the question before the body at this time. That kind of change where you get the kind of count that you're looking for would have to be policy changes enacted by the Congress.
Do they ever, do you ever have, uh, do, does anybody ever audit the censuses, Rod? Is there ever, is there anything like that ever done, just to check their numbers? Any kind of an audit? Or is it just whatever the census comes back, that's just what we take and roll with? Or is there any safeguards in place to make sure that the data's right? I think something happened on your end, Rod, we can't hear you, we were hearing you fine, did you do something on your phone? You on speakerphone? No?
He's connected.
Interesting, we just lost you in our sound system and our, we, we can barely hear you over the computer, but we had you plugged into our sound system inside of our chambers, and you, and we can hear you a lot better. Nothing's coming in right now. Huh? Move the phone, it's not coming over the phone, is it? Oh, it is?
He's connected, though, yeah.
And it's going into the microphone, and because the mic's picking the sound up?
Sir, can you hear me? We lost the call.
Yeah, it's still saying he's connected.
Yeah.
Uh, just a second, Pamela's calling you right now, Rod.
Hello?
Yeah, we got you back now.
Okay, uh, so I don't know if you heard any of, uh, I don't know where I was.
I stopped you just a couple minutes, I don't know. Yeah, oh, as far as the tabulators and a, and a safeguard on the audit, any kinda-
Oh, yes, uh, the Census Bureau has all kinds of internal audit, audit, that's why they take so long, and, and this year, for the first time in history, they actually did not produce the census in April of twenty twenty-one, they usually, they, they always have produced the census results in the, the following April to tell you what the actual total population of the United States was on April first, twenty twenty. That has always come out in April of the next year, this year, they didn't give any data at all until August, they didn't have final data until September.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, nobody in New Mexico got the integrated data with the, with the precinct, by precinct-
Yeah.
Until October fourteenth, uh, so, but a lot of that, they blamed on COVID, of course, a lot of things are attributed to COVID, but also, there is the very rigorous process within the Census Bureau, uh, where they're, they're checking and rechecking, uh, from hundreds of different angles with regard to what the enumerators have put in, what their supervisors have done, what, what demographers, uh, have expected from each geographic region, whether or not every house has been hit, whether, uh, compiling the, uh, what they call the community survey, which is, uh-
Yeah.
Only a sample-
Yeah.
Of the, of the population, but that's, that's not, that's not what's used for your purposes.
Well, and you know, and our, our concerns are always changing, you know, I mean, as our world changes, our, uh, elected positions change, and the issues change, and I think that, you know, if it was ten years ago, I may not be sitting here with the same concern that I'm sitting with, here with now as far as the illegals and stuff, but we just look at the data that we're collecting off of our border, and we can see, Rod, that our, the mic, the border's out of control, and it has been for the last about five years. Um, so, that's gonna, that, that's gonna change- So that's going to, that, that's going to change the census, you know? That's going to change how we do things. If we have an influx of illegals coming in, which we have right now, then that's going to affect our census, and it's going to affect redistricting, and it's going to vote our vote, it's going to affect our voting blocs, and it's going to, I don't know. I think that it's, it's, it's heading us down a direction that I don't want to go because I still believe in freedom, and I still believe in our country. But...
Well, and, and I don't disagree with you about the, the fact that there are illegal immigrants living in the U.S. I mean, but in, even in 2010, you still had, their estimates are higher today, but in 2010, you still had the estimate of about 11 million or so illegal immigrants living in the U.S. at the time of the, of the 2010 census, so...
We've had an immigration problem a long time, I know.
Yes, yes. So, and, and so nonetheless, Otero County was redistricted then, and there were illegal immigrants living in the country in 2000. And Otero County carried out its own redistricting in 2001, and again in 2011. So, I, Commissioner, I agree with you that there is an enormous problem at the, at the border, and that estimates now show that, you know, a couple of million people have crossed over this year unlawfully. But that, that's really not the, that's not the task before you as the commissioner.
Yeah, I know, the task, the task I have is just to honor my oath, and I just don't have, I don't have peace in supporting any of this, Rod, just, I really don't. Not, not whenever it's based off of a census that's counting illegal, illegals in our country. I just, I don't see why leaders in the past didn't throw a bigger fit over this, but I don't know. Maybe a lot smarter than, I don't know, maybe they could pick their battles better.
All right, so if there's no further discussion on this, what, how do you, how do we go about picking a plan? I mean, how do you?
You need to come to some sort of consensus on a plan and make sure in your motion to signify if it's Plan A, B, or C.
All right, so my feelings is Plan A. Commissioner Griffin?
I'm not, I'm not going to participate. I don't, I don't, I think that any move forward, in my opinion, any vote for any plan is a vote to support numbers that were not legally, in my opinion, were not legally collected. I, I, I'm here to support American citizens.
Commissioner Markwork?
Well, I don't disagree with a lot of stuff that Coy says, and I understand where he's coming from, but I feel like I could comfortably move forward with Plan A because it's basically what we've got right now. And, I mean, I could, I could move forward with that.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to request approval of Ordinance 21-02, amending Ordinance 85-01 to reassign Precinct A or District A or Plan A. Plan A according to the three commissioned districts. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay?
Nay.
And I, I want y'all to know too, that my comments and opinions, don't take it as condescending and condemning, because it's only my opinion.
Well, yeah, we all have our own.
Absolutely, absolutely, so I don't, you know, just because I speak strongly whenever I share my opinion, doesn't mean that, you know, I mean, I'm not, yeah.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Madam Manager and Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rod.
Thanks, Rod. All right, that's going to take us down to the new business. Request approval of multi-line and law enforcement coverage for 2022, selecting NMC for the multi-line and law enforcement sheriff coverage with the QBE specialty for law enforcement detention. Matt, you want to brief us on this?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, took a while for counties to get back with us. But the numbers, we were down in some areas, up in other areas. One of the areas that is going up is cyber. That'll probably go up even more next year, just because of all the attacks from everyone working at home now. So, all in all, it only went up $1,400, so it's not a, a bad thing.
So, I got a question on my notes here, on the optional, which is on, it's $235,000. Hold on, no, that's not it either.
The annual premium going up to $235 for QBE?
Yes.
And that would be $150,000 deductible instead of the $250. Historically, we still have not had the claims in detention that has even hit the $150,000, even though our deductible is $250. It just puts us on the, the hook for the first $250,000, or $150,000 if we go with the other option, which then, of course, would increase our premium.
Right, you're going to have a higher premium on the lower deductible. But, so if we stayed with what we are, get me through this, tell me, are we going to, are premiums going to stay the same as it is?
Our premium is going to go up $1,476. We went down in our property, equipment, $24,607. Law enforcement on the sheriff's side went up $26,038. Detention went down $10,899, and that is due to just continuation with QBE, and they like what they're seeing over at the, at the detention center. And then our cyber went up $10,944. That's, even though it's flood and stopgap, the big component of that was the cyber liability. It's just getting hard for insurance companies to cover any of that.
So, explain to me a little bit on the flood, and that, that is any county property? That's what the flooding is covering, or?
Any county-owned property. So, this building sits in a flood zone, so if it were to flood, we'd have flood insurance on it.
Okay, just strictly county-operated, or?
Correct, there's a few fire stations that sit in a flood zone. The courthouse sits in a flood zone. So it would be insurance on that.
What are you recommending? What are you thinking is the best? With the $1,400 increase, and that's still with the $250,000 deductible, and then if we went to the $150,000 deductible, am I reading that it's the $235,000?
We would pay $235,011, which would add another $55,594 to the cost. And in conversation with Daniels, it's, they still recommend that we take the higher deductible and lower premium cost.
So stay with the $250 deductible, which would be a $1,400 increase?
Correct.
Any questions?
No, it's not my specialty, I hate insurance, I hate it. Let's just, I say, let's get rid of Aller Insurance. Put all of our money in a hat, and we'll save it for an accident here.
Better be a big hat.
Oh, gosh, I'm telling you, especially nowadays.
And this cyber insurance is going up all over.
It's going up all over.
And my, and their job has increased.
Yes.
And it's just going to go up more and more, the more they don't, the less justice we have. You know, these hackers, they just wind up just getting away with everything. They get away with it, or they get paid off, you know? Whenever the companies are paying hackers, or the government is paying hackers.
Some of them are...
Not hacking our government.
Some of them are getting caught.
Well, they need to be. The city and the, the city was, they, they, they were scam, I wonder if that, was there ever any? Do you know if they ever caught the people that got the city for?
I do not know on that one.
Yeah? I tell you. There should be, there should be.
It's funny, that's my IT company at work calling me right now.
Who is it? See, there's your phone, that's probably, your phone probably picked up the conversation. Now they're calling you.
Creepy.
Big Brother's calling.
I'm not talking to you right now, buddy.
All right, no further discussion? Make a motion to request approval of the multi-line and law enforcement coverage for 2022, selecting NMC for multi-line and law enforcement sheriff coverage with the QBE specialty for law enforcement detention.
My second motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's the end of our business, so I'll make motion for adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.